Please rise. Your pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Karen?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Ms. Whitmer?
Here.
Mr. Robcom?
Here.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Start.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Ms. Whitmer?
Yes.
Mr. Robcom?
Yes.
Motion passes. Superintendent Tannen's report?
Retiring, Mr. Wolf. He couldn't have done it any better. You're up. How'd you do, by the way? How you doing?
Um, no, okay. It's definitely first day. Putting the bat on the ball. We're still good.
Anyway. Yeah, right there.
I asked to come in and speak for a moment. My, my, my father last year was a huge part of our baseball program and he was retired. He did a ton of work on the baseball field and like took a lot of pride in it. And, uh, you know, he was a, once East Palestine, became a Clipper when I became a Clipper. And, uh, because of him, last year we played all but one game. Probably played the most in the area, just regular season. And he kept on it. And unfortunately though, he passed away in, um, November. Just a quick illness. But even in the last few days, he was like, talking about the field, talking about the baseball team, talking about just what we do. And he loved it so much and he gave me a list of things he wanted to see done on the field, things that needed to be done, things that he went to. And, uh, before he passed away, he told my mom about some money he had kind of scattered in the house, some different wallets and that sort of thing. So she went through it and she kind of gathered it up and she's like, it's his money. And she wanted to do something that he would love and he would want. So I have a check from my mom, kind of my dad's arm, for twenty, $2,150 to be donated to the athletic department for the, for working the field. We actually already spent the money.
We just didn't work it. We just didn't work it.
Pretty much, we, uh, because of the weather, it just happened to be the weather was so nice that they were able to get out yesterday. But this has been in the works, but I wanted to kind of talk about my dad a little bit and kind of, one of the big things on this list was just new bullpens down the baselines. And that's something we were able to do. And also with this, we're going to be able to spray, if anybody goes out on the field in like April and May last year with Dane Lyons everywhere, we're going to be able to do some stuff, work on that and hopefully just kind of keep up with what he's going. I mean, we were on the field yesterday. I know the weather's been really nice, but Crestview came to us today because they can't get on the field. There's a lot of other schools that can't get on there and I really think a lot of what he did last year is a reason why we're on the field. We had some other people come and help and do that, but you know, he's huge impact and I wanted to talk about that, so.
Bring it on up here. We're taking all. Thank you so very much. That's awesome. So I, you know, I just say from last year, as I got out to the, to the games, I, I came to the, one of the baseball games and see this guy busting his tail on, on the field. I'm like, who is this guy? And the whispers were like, that's Coach Wolfstad. That's Coach Wolfstad. He took tremendous pride in working and preparing that field and just, you know, thank you so much on behalf of the school and the board and, you know, we're just glad you're part of our program and we were glad to have him when he was able to do that. So, thank you. Thank you.
And it looks great, too. Yeah, I was out there this morning. We were out, out there, it was like 6:00 AM and I look and I go, this whole field looks different. You guys really, and I seen you out there early the other morning, right? It was like 6:30 you were out there. Was that your silver truck or something?
Yeah, I was out there.
Yeah. I seen you out there. But it, it looks like night and day. So if you need any help with spraying it, I got a huge sprayer that's a 55 gallon sprayer, 55 gallon drum. And one of the great big huge things that come out, we can always use that too, so.
All right, great. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
So, uh, next is the Key Clipper Award. And, um, Mr. Hostetler, building principal at Columbiana High School, has nominated Patricia Misos. And, um, I'm going to read his, uh, letter to me regarding, uh, Mrs. Misos. Says, "Mr. Mook, I'd like to nominate Patricia Misos to receive a Key Clipper Award. Tricia's been instrumental in the development of many new and exciting programs within our school district. She has worked in many different areas and has given up time and energy to make those programs work well for all students. She has also worked with fellow teachers to improve and add new skills. Tricia has run with the idea of bringing real world problem solving to the classroom. Some of the ideas that she has implemented in the past few years have included personal finance class, which implements a blended curriculum, mobile A P, or app design, video game design, various college credit courses, Clipper Corner, our in-house coffee shop, and our newest creation, Clipper Corner Graphic Design and T-shirt Company. She has also been invaluable in training new and current staff in the use of technology and the implementation of new ideas. It is my sincere pleasure to nominate her for a Key Clipper Award." Lance Hostetler, Principal Columbiana High School. So, I'll just echo, um, what Mr. Hostetler has said in his letter. I think just a tremendous amount of effort goes into some of the different things that we're doing at the school and, and, um, Mrs. Misos has gone above and beyond what maybe a regular staff member in our, our district does. And she demonstrates why and, and how Columbiana schools remain excellent. And, you know, her core content isn't English reading or, or mathematics or whatnot might be evaluated in the report card, but what she brings to the table is some courses that students come to enjoy and want to be involved with every single day. She makes it fun for them. She's real, she's real with them. She brings real world experiences to them and I know they greatly appreciate that. So, I'd like to award this to her.
I want to say thank you to all the administration and the administration for all I need to do on the program that has brought it to Columbiana. It's been exciting, frustrating, and I, I absolutely love it and I work with the best staff and we all know the students are the best around us. Thank you.
Thank you.
And she always smiles. Always smiling.
I think the whole family's pretty talented in graphics. Her husband even, I don't know if she, he solicited, she solicited him or what, but he, uh, he came in and worked on some graphics, the things that we were doing, getting the room ready. And, uh, as we're making that changeover with the graphics programs, he was right there with her. I don't know if she pulled you out of work or what, so.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I just want to talk a little bit about the report card. First of all, I, I want to send an appreciation out to the media. You know, the Morning Journal headlines and Sunday News of the Salem News, um, have Columbiana schools featured because of our academics. You can go around the bend in our commons and they represent us very well athletically. Um, we have kids' pictures throughout, whether it be athletics, academics, um, any extracurricular involved with, the pictures of our kids that we cut out and we put on the bulletin boards in our commons. And really, the media does a tremendous job of, throughout the, the county, demonstrating what schools are doing, specifically, I think, public schools. Our school district, and, and this is, you know, it's funny because Mr. Jim Brony, who does a tremendous job, focuses in on, on these academic pieces in report cards each year. And the, the, the thing that, that I looked at first and foremost is how do we do on our indicators? Are the majority of our kids proficient? Now, that might sound trivial and that might sound like, are, are we average or above from that point, but the majority of our kids are doing very, very well on the report card. And, you know, I, I think it, you know, it's, my wife sent me a, a, a little thing off of Zillow and it had featured really Dave, Dave's building, Mr. Buzzard's building in the middle school, that they're ranked a 10 out of 10 in area schools. Um, and we've, we, and our staff takes the report card very seriously. It, it is a sense of pride about what we do and how we do things here in Columbiana. And, you know, I, I like to tell you that, that I'm part of that, but I'm, I'm telling you that the community, the, uh, staff take great pride in this. And they continue to do that. And then when they, when we bring in new staff members, they bring those folks along with that sense of, of pride and with, with the report card. And, you know, we have that ingrained in our staff that this is something that we look forward to because we're working at it every day. Well, and I'll just quickly go down the list for you of the indicators. So all three buildings for us, Mr. Sh, Mr. Buzzard, A, Mrs. Sharshin, A, and Mr. Hostetler, A, and indicators met. Now, I'm going to go down the county and I'm going to basically lay out for you that there is no other district in the county that had all As. And to me, that, that says a great deal about our staff, that says a great deal about our students and our families that, that are represented in Columbiana schools. Crestview Schools had two Bs and a C. Beaver Local had three As, a B and a D. United Local, a B and a D. Lisbon, a C and a B. Leitonia, an F and a D. East Palestine, a C, an F, and an A. East Liverpool had four Fs and a D. Wellsville, two Fs and a D. Salem, three Fs and a D. Now, you, you look at that in itself and it tells you a great deal about the pride that, that this district has taken. And it, it's not just in the seven years that I've been here, but way before, uh, when Mrs. Sharshin was teaching kindergarten. And it's the pride that, that they have to, to push us in there. We have some room for improvement. You know, you say, well, we have an A. Well, we know we have room for improvement. We're looking at our performance index. We're looking at all the other pieces of that report card and we're trying to put ourselves in position to be excellent all the time, every time. And we know that there are some subgroups with, with students with disabilities that we want to focus in on and we want to make improvements. And I was in Mr. Hostetler's staff meeting, I was in Mr. Buzzard's staff meeting, and they are in preparation to, for game day. You know, and I think that that's how Mr. Buzzard approaches it. He, he kind of approaches it as, this is our contest, this is where we're going out to demonstrate what we can do and how we can do it. I, I was in the meeting today with Mr. Hostetler and they are looking at trends. One of the ways we improved tremendously was four-year graduation rate. In 2011, we weren't meeting the grade, so we were pushing and pressuring from top to bottom to get that grade where it needs to be. And we, you know, we, we reached that A this year. And we think that that's fundamentally important moving forward, that students are, are coming through from K to 12 in Columbiana schools and are prepared to take on whatever it is that they want to do when they leave here. So, you know, thank you for, for the press. Um, you know, obviously there's times where we're, where we're not where we want to be and it's, it's focused and it keeps us on track and, you know, I can't say that we don't, we don't appreciate when we're recognized when we do, so. Uh, other than that, that's it for my report. I wanted to pass down the, the screen printing group's first, uh, product, really, this is the first real product, would you say? I don't know if it's the first one you've done, but we were able, I shouldn't say we, but I like to say we, even though it was huge. You know, our goal was to be able, you know, part of the reason we wanted to do this and have this screen printing class is to minimize the cost when, when our kids and our programs need shirts and materials made and they go out and they spend $10 a shirt or more. We were able to do this one for about $5. Now, most places you can't go and get the shirt for $5. So we were able to get it, print it, use product, make the screens, and do this for, for Quiz Bowl team. And they're going to have these and they're going to be able to wear them. The PTO, according to Tricia told me, I'll pass that there. And this is, this isn't the, one of, this is one of their very first ones that they, they did out, their, their, I don't know, would you say quality assurance?
Yeah, they were, that's one of her tests at the beginning, so there's a lot of.
Maybe a few flaws in it, but that's, that's one we're not going out. That was in the, uh, where, when we do shirts box.
Yes.
So, um, but, but, um, the PTO is going to, is going to get some shirts made for seventh graders going up Cedar Point. And so that all of our kids are in a shirt that's identifiable, that we know, so that we can, um, try and do the best job in those big parks like that of knowing where Columbiana kids are. And, um, you know, we think we can keep the cost under five for them, which is pretty significant when they're spending money that they fundraised to, to put back into our program. So, um, one, one last one, I'll pass this one down. This is from the press that we have, so we can actually cut out letters and do glitter and whatnot, uh, different shirts and put them on our, put them on different shirts for some of our programs. And this is something that you need sort of special equipment to do, you can't do it with the screen. This has the glitter that you see on a lot of different things, so. I just want to pass that out for you so you could also see what, what some of the things that they're working on right now, currently. And this is really, we're kind of building the plane as we're flying it, wouldn't you say?
Yeah.
And next year, we hope to have it a little bit more fine tuned and we'll be rolling right out of the gate. That's it for my report. And if you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Item number five, Patricia.
I just really, really want to thank each and every one of you board members. I feel that I have the best board members in here. I hear stories of, I'm serious. When you go to a board meeting, they just say, I'm like, you know, you've got five heads. And I said to the ladies that told me this, I was like, my board members make me feel comfortable. I see you anywhere, you, you know, we speak, we, you know, hey, what's good to eat today? You know, that kind of stuff. But truly, really, I mean, thank you each and every one of you. Number one, for letting me be here in Columbiana, working with a great team. And if it wasn't for you guys, I wouldn't be here. But seriously, thank you very much. And Nutrition thanks you as well. I think on the second page is our specials of the month that we talk, always talk about. I know, um, I feel that it's important because, like I said, again, with the rules that we have to follow, the regulations that we have to follow, these are the new recipes that we try. And I know there's been some of you that has been at school, that has seen some of the mills that we do offer on those special days. They are good, sometimes are good. And then, um, down at the bottom down there, I have about my Yak meetings. I have a Yak meeting scheduled with Mrs. Sharshin at hers next week. I try to do them at least three times in a building. That's our regulations with Nutrition. And, um, they put in here, of course, the giving back for the, um, what was that, uh, foundation, Make-A-Wish Foundation. Nutrition always is really, really big on that. And I just, Cindy and I were talking about it and it's amazing what they, they actually give to students or people to make their last wish or a wish for anybody, you know. Um, I guess that's about all. Oh, I do want to say one thing. Um, I have some donuts up there. I know some of you have had one. Those are our new items. Um, this week here is, um, National School Lunch Breakfast Week. Actually, you can have it any week, but it, I took this week. Um, we have the glazed donut, which is really, really good. It just tastes like it came from a bakery. And the chocolate one is the Ultra Chocolate and it's a 1.2 ounce grain. So to make up for that extra ounce of grain, we have to offer bread with that as well. Those went really well at the middle school today. We offered those today for, um, the breakfast, but I'm trying to bring in different items that, you know, to bring those breakfast items out, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, is this here, the recipe on the back, the beat?
Yes, that is. You will love that.
Looks good.
And I'm sorry about the picture, but that's the only picture I had, the recent one. And I was like, somebody says something to me, so we need a new picture. You look like a wacky.
You guys look younger.
All right, thank you, Tina. Item number six, principal reports?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't, but my ladies, I'm sorry. They're wonderful people, they really are.
Well, to mention it, just because, because I go to the school once in a while and I'll come in there to see my daughter or whatever and I've had lunches. And the ladies back there and what they do is absolutely incredible, what they do. I mean, and the, and the food that they make for our children and it's, it really is truly great with what you guys do. And here, here's the difference, those children are hungry, when they come through the line, everybody has a great smile to their faces and things like that, sort of re-energize them for the rest of the day. So it's a great thing what you do.
And you know, I, I do, um, say, um, I have a, somebody that told me one day, I was always so happy, happy, happy. And I said, it doesn't matter what kind of mood you're in, you gotta put that face on because that child may, you may be the only nice person they talk to all day long.
Absolutely.
Hope not. Hope not, Tina.
Y'all are so nice. Just like, you know, there, huh? Big, big smile.
When you felt any way that was even let the kids taste there, before they.
Oh, see, that's.
They found, either to see if they liked it.
That's awesome. So to see if they like it rather than not, right? That's good. Good stuff.
Thank you, Cindy.
Item number six, principal's report?
Uh, I was first for Dixon, in the board chair, so is my March Miss letter. Under Professional Development, uh, my teachers are attending the content area trainings offered in the evenings for, from Mahoney County ESC. I'll be attending as part of a requirement for working on the needs assessment piece in our CCIP for Title I. Um, part of the requirement is that I attend a Title I conference every year, so I'll be attending that next week. There's a new, um, piece for preschool requirements called Step Up to Quality. Mrs. Volkerberger, Mrs. Helvestad, and myself have been working on it. Um, the binder is about that thick. There's a lot of requirements, a lot of step-by-step things, and we have to actually go through, um, our safe account on ODE and fill out forms and you get rated and you have to have a three, four, or five star rating to continue getting funded for your special ed students in preschool and for your preschools. So, um, we're working hard on that. It's replacing what used to be called the impact document that we would work on, scan and upload. This is a little different. It, it encompasses everybody, even the aides that work in the classroom will need some professional development. And the professional development that all of us need is already listed. You have to choose from those lists and attend those to get the credit versus being able to go out and find something. Um, underneath student achievement and progress, I wanted, I put the Clipper Times there and I put the site address, the link to go to the Clipper Times. Mrs. Strohhecker is doing Google Classroom with her class and I would like to bring her to a board meeting for her to show you how this works, but the kids log on and there's a calendar and all the things that are due for her on this calendar and the kids can click on it and work on it, but she sees all the kids. And she sees the progress and who's finished and who's completed it, who started, who's stuck. And while they're writing things, she can send them a message live. They're at the computers, she's at hers. She could send them a message and say, you need to look at this. And she just highlights the area. She doesn't say you're missing a capital letter, you're missing a period, she doesn't say it. She just highlights it and they go back and look and it's kind of editing live. And she's been doing that, so they started a newspaper called the Clipper Times, but it's an online newspaper that the kids just keep adding to. Um, for example, there's teacher interviews on there. Under sports, they interviewed Coach Popoli and asked him certain questions. There's some academic news on there. They were interested in some of their friends that had moved on to the middle school, so they did an article on the spelling bee in the winter of the spelling bee. So if you have a chance and take a look at that, it's really something neat. Uh, the Columbiana County Career and Technical Center Art Show was held on March 3rd. Participants were Carly Martin, Camille Jeffries, Emmy Komet, Soki Davis, and Hailey Tilton. Gavin Sloan and Kyle Burt both qualified for the OAC State Championship for Wrestling. It'll be held at the Cavelli Center on March 19th. The fall language arts testing results, um, came out and all of the students that are in the basic and unlimited performance level descriptor will be placed on a reading improvement and monitoring plan, so interventions are going strong and picking up. This is Read to Read Week and it's called Red, White, and Read. And so far, the students have read 8,349 minutes of reading. Um, each day this week, there's something different. Today was game day, game board day. And the kids divided into groups, older kids played with the younger kids. Fourth graders went out on the lawn and had a live, they were the checkers, for a checkers game. And the teachers had to problem solve and tell the kids where to move and who to jump and it was a pretty cool day. And we have speakers coming, we have assemblies. Clippy the Clipper was there today, um, so it's just been a fun week, just to, you know, getting the kids to read. Our DI teams, um, on Saturday, they'll be at Beaver Local competing. And I listed there my coaches and the, um, kids that are on the scientific challenge team and the theater team that I have coming from Dixon. My principal advisory committee, made up of fourth graders that had an election early in the year to get on it, and we've been meeting about different things. Mr. Martin came last month to our meeting to get input for the kids about technology and what they have at Dixon that they would like to see for upcoming kids or what they have at Dixon that they were wondering if they would have at the middle school. And this month's meeting, they're coming up with questions for Mr. Buzzard for when we come and visit the middle school. We take a tour and we visit. They're very nervous, so they have lots of questions, so we're going to try to compile those and get them to Mr. Buzzard ahead of time. Jump for Heart raised $7,987 for the American Heart Association. Over 150 students participated. The top class raised $760 with one student donating $420. I'd like to thank, um, Ms. Schiffauer for that. She, she ran that program. It's amazing what kids will do for a lanyard with Ninja Dog.
How much, how much was that amount?
It's amazing. They raised $7,987.
Wow.
It's amazing. Yeah. Um, I have parents saying, I gave them lunch money for that day, well, no, the Ninja Dog was more important, so, uh, the Ninja Dog.
Wow.
Frank Armstrong contacted us. He is from the Lions Club and they donate every year a $50 gift card for all of my Giving Tree families. Well, he wanted to start this month donating a $50 gift card for, you know, and I'll probably work with Leslie really close on this because she's kind of aware of things, Becky's kind of aware, but each month he would like us to pick a family that's having a little bit of financial hardship, that either doesn't always or always, you know, and he would like to give that card to that family for the month for any Neumann's store, so, I thought that was really nice. Our recycling program that Mr. Moser is running and took this and ran with it, um, they weighed, picked up our paper for the month and weighed it and we had 695 pounds of paper was collected. They don't give you money till you get to a ton, but it's getting there. And it's actually lots and lots of community people and they love that they just during the day pull back the bus drop off and dump their papers, magazines, newspapers, so it's working well. Uh, we have a Relay for Life team at Joshua Dixon and Jen Moore has taken this on. Uh, we have a Relay for Life team at Joshua Dixon, and Jen Moore has taken this on, um, it's Color My World, Purple, Everything Purple. We're doing a sip and paint at Joshua Dixon for Kids Sip and Paint, where they have juice boxes and they get to paint on canvas and paint pictures. Um, just charging a minimal amount if people want to, participation's optional, trying to raise money for Relay for Life, um, and we're doing a movie night coming up, uh, a Wear All Purple Day, things like that. And PTO has their, uh, annual fundraiser night on March 19th at the Dutch Village Inn. I'd like to thank PTO for sponsoring Mother-Son Hockey Night, they went to see the, um, Hockett Valley Center. Mrs. Moore for intermurals, again Courtney Schifauer for Jump for Heart. And my Right to Read Week this week committee, they call themselves the Flight Crew, because it's all about Clippers, and everybody's doors are decorated with Clipper airplanes, and our Family Barnes &amp; Noble Night is Friday night, and all the kids designed a Clipper airplane that's gonna be on display at Barnes &amp; Noble Friday night. It's, it's huge, everybody comes to it, it's packed, there's an art gallery of the kids' artwork, there's a scavenger hunt, teachers read, I'm reading a book in the children's section, um, and all the proceeds, a percentage of the proceeds comes back to our special ed teachers that are working together to put this on, Mrs. Helvestadt and, um, Mrs. Milkyell. And this is the fifth year for it, which I can't believe, so that's awesome. I put some dates down, um, below, just to say one more time, our Family Literacy Night at Barnes &amp; Noble is from 5 to 8 this Friday, for anybody interested in coming. Uh, the PTO fundraiser's March 19th, and if you're up for some real fun, we have 12,000 filled eggs coming for March 24th's annual egg hunt. Thank you, that's my report.
Southside Middle School Good News Report, uh, gonna try not to repeat anything from Mrs. Scharshin, so this is gonna be a short report. But I will repeat, uh, something from Mr. Wolf, that one of the things that, that we should be most proud of with the performance index score is, um, a lower performance index means some kids just aren't making it. And to have a good performance index score, um, you really have to work hard to let no one fall through the cracks. And I think a lot of schools, you know, anything you do, nine out of 10 ain't bad, you know, or eight out of 10. You know, and we're feeling pretty good about ourselves, you know, these two just didn't make it. But you don't get a performance index score like we do without really going for 100% effort for 100% kids. And that's something I think that, that we do here that's really special. We, you know, we, you know, we try to, we try to win them all, and that's the only way you get performance index scores like that. Um, conferences on February 10th, Southside Middle School held, it's parent-teacher conferences, and, um, it may not sound like a large number, but we had 69 conferences, which is a lot for our second round. Our first round's always packed, uh, but we had a lot of great conferences at conference night. Um, Student Council had, uh, a dance for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders on February 10th. Uh, the dance was very well attended, um, you know, we obviously don't go out and buy new clothes, but we had lots of party dresses and, and, uh, it was, uh, some, it was, it was a great time. So we're thankful for Mrs. Baylor and Mrs. Edwards and the Student Council, who, uh, work hard to get, um, to allow our middle school students to start, start preparing for some of the activities at high school. You know, you get, go to a middle school dance, and, you know, you're ready for it to go, and you're a freshman in high school, you don't sit out the first couple of years, because you're afraid to go to a dance. So, yeah, I think we do a pretty good job of, of that type of activity. Uh, Clipper Sports, track teams have begun their conditioning, and, uh, next Monday, we begin practice officially, and I think we have about a month from tomorrow, is our first meet. And as of right now, um, I think in the past half dozen years, we'll have our, our largest numbers, both teams combined. You know, it's every year, you know, it goes up and down from year to year, and the boys might, may have a large number and the girls be small, but right now, we have two pretty large teams, which will be nice. So we ought to be able to have all the, all the events filled and hopefully score pretty well. Always love reading our, our academic excellence, uh, after report cards come out, you know, we're not ashamed to say that, that, um, you know, we have high academic standards, high expectations. And when you see, uh, you know, when you see the results that the students put out with their, um, with, with their nine-week grades. Uh, on our honor roll, uh, we had 29 in the fifth grade, 25 in the sixth grade, 25 in the seventh grade, and 28 in the eighth grade. And then our distinguished honor roll, which means all As and one B, um, 24 in the fifth grade, 19 in the sixth grade, 21 in the seventh grade, and 11 in the eighth grade. Um, once again, you know, we, we challenge, and, um, for students to have all As is really something. Um, and.
Someone's gone.
Oh, okay, I mean, stop.
Time's up.
Um, upcoming, important upcoming dates, uh, Mrs. Scharshin kind of trashed this here, I don't have too many. Uh, County Spelling Bee tomorrow, uh, we have four in our County Spelling Bee at Lisbon. Uh, I will mention DI, we have five teams as well, uh, this Saturday at Beaver Local, um, a, a win there, first place there sends us to state DI. Uh, we have Hoops for Hearts on March 18th, Mr. Hurdle's running that, um, hopefully we can, uh, challenge, uh, Joshua Dixon for the amount of money that they raised in their, in their charity work. Um, and finally, uh, March 8th is our National Junior High, our National, um, National Junior Honor Society induction, it's during the school day on the March 8th. Uh, Mrs. Scharshin mentioned the other upcoming events in her report, that's it for Southside. I'll go, I'm gonna go first next time.
High school, Mr. Hostetler can't be here this evening, so I'll deliver his report. Um, just a few quick personal notes first, uh, before I get there, I'd like to thank the board for, uh, supporting us and taking a, a team to Columbus for the tech conference every year this past month. Uh, we were able to take a team of five, Mrs. Misos, Miss Michael, middle school science teacher, Mr. Mosher, and Mr. Wolf, who, who spoke here this evening. Um, I really pride our team on taking it serious, going down, um, we really collaborate, um, and it's really a selfless group of, of individuals that go down. Um, a lot of schools, and I see this, there, there are individuals that go to sessions, I, this doesn't apply to my classroom, well, that might be, but they'll, they'll find individuals that can use the material to go down for. And I truly believe some of our best technology experts that, that we can rely on for professional development and so forth are right here with us. So when we have in-service opportunities, we rely on the same group of individuals to help, help deliver that. So, um, thank you for always supporting our efforts in going to Columbus. Second personal note, just, uh, congratulations, Tricia, uh, she truly is an amazing educator. Her impact extends well beyond our classroom, and I say that not only because she continues to ask for more square footage in our building, um, but she truly does have a big part to play in just about everything that goes on in our, in our, our school. It's not just at the high school, but district-wide, um, our district-wide assembly, um, you know, you ask, you need someone to direct a lip dub, and she just always volunteers, no matter what it is. And I, I won't repeat all of the things that Mr. Wolf and Mr. Hostetler said, but, uh, congratulations for all you do for the Clipper family. Um, yeah, moving on, academics and curriculum, Amy McCormick, high school science teacher, was accepted into the Duke Energy Academy at Purdue University. It's a week-long, uh, course on STEM-related energy topics, and Ms. McCormick has also gone, uh, to Columbus in the past, and I'm confident that she'll bring things back, not only for her own classroom, uh, but for others. Students and community section, congratulations to Bryn Pennell for her placement in the Channel 27 Caring for Our Community Public Service Announcement Contest. She will be recognized March 11th along with four other area students. Athletics and activities, speech, our speech and debate team, uh, this past week competed in the state, state speech competition. We had 19 students qualify for state, and Ms. Lord came to the staff meeting this evening, obviously, she talked a little bit about, um, putting things in perspective. And just to give us an idea, there are districts that, that have maybe 100, 120 students in their speech program, and they may be fortunate enough to send two or three kids to, to state. So for our low 30s, um, membership, having 19 qualify for state is just amazing. Um, the following were quarter finalists, meaning they made it to the top 24 in their area for state, Jillian Stillson, Michael Vargo, Noah Dane. Following were semifinalists, meaning they made it to the top 12, Doty Elnas, Sophia Smith, Paige Herbert, David White, Adam Kyle, Crystal Stone, and Cheyenne Carr. And state finalists, meaning they made it to the top six in the state, Cassie Need, sixth in drama, Cortland Stone, sixth in humor, Ally Mareschi, third in original, and Brianna Davis and Marina Merlow, second in duo. Wrestling, we had district qualifiers, Tim Daven, Caleb Rupert, Frank Rupert, and Brent Burden. And Tim Daven is ITCL champion and sectional champion. Girls' basketball, finished the year with a record 20 and 5. Honors include ITCL co-champions, sectional champions, Kennedy Fulham, first-team ITCL, first-team county, Bryn Pennell, first-team ITCL, second-team county, ITCL All-Star game participant, and Columbian County All-Star participant. Elise Hammond, uh, has a school record for three pointers in a game being seven, and also on the ITCL All-Star game participant, and Columbian County All-Star participant. Alexis Cross, honorable mention from county, Mariah Rovneck, honorable mention ITCL. Boys finished the year 8 and 14, honors include Perdett Baker, second-team ITCL, second-team county, Diego Villatoro, honorable mention ITCL, honorable mention county, and Columbian County All-Star participant. And finally, Ganon Hartley, Columbian County All-Star participant. So great things going on in the high school, thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number seven is public input, and I'd like to welcome our guests this morning, this, this evening, I guess, so, so, welcome. No input, so item number eight, no need for. Item number nine?
Make a motion to consider approving the February 2016 financial reports.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion?
Were we discussing?
We had discussed, because we've been so busy with negotiations, that I wasn't going to have financial reports this week. Well, I got them done on Sunday, and I put them in March's board agenda instead of April's, and Christie put it on the agenda while we were in a meeting.
So can I make a motion to table that right now until next month, since we may not have the correct information, since we've been a bit involved in some other activities?
Since Christie had them on the board agenda, I sent them out to you later, but I knew you wouldn't have time to look at them.
Swing out, motion to table that, or? Yeah, motion to table, maybe a second.
I'll second that, motion to table it, so, next month.
Discussion? Roll call?
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Hong Kong?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 10?
Like to make a motion to consider approving the following following personnel of 2015-16 school year as recommended by the superintendent with compensation in accordance with board-approved schedules and retroactive to the first day worked pending verification of all credentials. MH Classroom maid, high school, Sarah Posey, bus driver, Kin, Nijo Wood?
KJ.
Kenno?
KJ.
Okay, I butchered that. Substitute support staff, Doris Moon.
I'll second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Hong Kong?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 11?
I might consider approving employment of following following as director, supervisor, or coach of a pupil activity program who's at 15-16 school year as recommended by the superintendent with compensation in accordance with board-approved schedules, pending verification of all credentials. Assistant baseball coach, John Rosati, William Sattler, and assistant softball coach, David GJ.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Roll call?
Whitmer?
Yes.
Hong Kong?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 12?
Like to make a motion to consider approving the following as volunteer for a pupil activity program for the 2015-16 school year as recommended by the superintendent. Dixon Classroom, Bonnie Murley.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? Roll call?
Hong Kong?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 13?
Make a motion to consider approving the resignation of Melanie Strohhecker, elementary teacher effective July 31st, 2016.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? Roll call?
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Hong Kong?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 14?
Like to consider a motion approving the retirement resignation of Christine Van Kleek Cook, effective June 30th, 2016.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
I think we should, uh, thank Christine Van Kleek for how many years of service, 15?
15.
16? Mm-hmm. Wow. It's a long time, she's been a great employee, we'll be sorry to see her go as well as Ms. Strohhecker, too.
Roll call?
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Hong Kong?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 15?
I might consider approving a memorandum of understanding with Eastern Gateway Community College for College Credit Plus services, effective fall 2016 through spring 2017, for the documents provided in this agenda.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Just out of curiosity, what programs will be available at Eastern Gateway versus what programs at our next item on the agenda?
Yeah, they're, they're both comparable, um, obviously, Eastern Gateways in competition with, um, Kent State and Youngstown State. Um, they're, they're, they're gonna provide the same types of coursework that kids can leave, that they do currently, that we've been mostly participating in Kent State.
Right.
Um, actually, our numbers are up, I just talked to Mr. Hostetler today, and we're looking at upwards of 40 students participating in College Credit Plus. Um, and if you understand how that works, taxpayer money pays for that to take place, so, uh, again, we're getting kind of beat up on all ends of the spectrum. One, College Credit Plus takes some money here, uh, Career Center takes some money here, um, open enrollment here, and obviously Charter Schools on the other end of the spectrum, so, you know, it's just another way that the funding gets split up for us, and, you know, from, from the standpoint that we're, we, our students benefit from is outstanding. Um, we're doing and trying to do more so that we can professionally develop our staff, and we have a young staff. But to try and get them in place to be able to offer those courses here, which would be less expensive for us in the long run. So that will take time, but, you know, the, all these programs basically say, we have the option to be able to utilize them and indeed say, uh, we have a student that can't get a course at Kent State, they could actually go to Kent and Eastern Gateway or Youngstown State. Most of ours, because of the long partnership we've had with Kent State through the, the seniors-to-sophomores program, utilize Kent State.
Right.
So it's in Salem, it's close by, it works well, but I know Eastern Gateway is working more to work through staff than, and they're really reaching out that way, so it will be advantageous for us in the future to, to have our staff doing, and we'll utilize whichever program's gonna give us the, the best price for our money.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. So roll, uh, item 16? So roll, item sixty?
We gotta vote.
Okay.
Roll call?
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncom?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes, item number sixteen.
Like to make a motion to consider approving a master agreement with Kent State University for college credit plus services effective July first, two thousand sixteen to June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen for the document provided with this agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? Roll call?
Roncom?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Motion passes, item number seventeen?
Make motion to consider approving a resolution to accept students from any Ohio school district, attending classes in the Columbiana Exempted Village Schools under the district's, entered district open enrollment policy, number five-one-one-three, for the two thousand sixteen through seventeen school year.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Roll call?
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncom?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion passes, item number eighteen?
Like to consider a motion for approving the employment of the following as having section two for the two thousand fifteen-sixteen school year as recommended by the superintendent, compensation is approved rate of twenty-five dollars per hour retroactive to first-day work, Casey Cusick, Lori Dota.
I'll second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncom?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion passes, item number nineteen?
I might consider reappointing Pat McLeese and Ron Detweiler to the Columbiana Park and Cemetery Board as members representing the Columbiana Exempted Village Schools for a four-year assignment.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Roll call?
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncom?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncom?
Yes.
Motion passes, item number twenty?
Item twenty, like to make motion to consider approving the following agreements with the governing authority of the Unica Channel Academy of Ohio as provided with this agenda, administrative agreement, maintenance service agreement, medical service agreement, special education contract, technology agreement, and technology service agreement.
I'll second the motion today.
Discussion?
Just reading along here.
Roll call?
Roncom?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving right along.
Action, item twenty-one?
We're just going to consider our first reading of the following new policies, revisions, and replacements to the board, there's a lot of things there, so we'll just list it, it's listed below. But no actions needed?
So item twenty-two, President's Report, Ms. Misos, congratulations, well-deserved award for all that you do. I know my kids, even in the middle school, love coming up to the Clipper Cafe, it's a big event, so my wallet has been affected by the Clipper Cafe. Quite awesome. So, great thing, so, just a thank you to all our administrators for the job that you guys do on a daily basis, for the teachers, you guys are the reason that we're the tops in the county and you guys do a phenomenal job, our teachers are tops and our students are great, but teachers like Ms. Misos make education fun for our kids and make them want to learn and it's a great opportunity, so we have great potential here and great opportunities for our students and we should be very proud of our, of our report cards, so you guys just serve a pat on the back and we need to be shouting that out into the community how great the education is here. Congratulations to all our athletes, winter athletes, and also to the speech and debate teams, those coaches, they put in hours upon hours upon hours and those, the students put in as much time, so just a great accomplishment for our community and our school district and those coaches need to be thanked, they're paid very little for what they do and, but you can tell that they love what they're doing, so, so, had to report.
Can I make a real quick comment?
Yeah.
Here, in reference to our school report cards and to the state, I just got to say something, as I look at these things and you look at some of these other school districts, you can truly see that our administrators, our teachers, our bus drivers, Tina and her cooking staff, everybody that works in Columbiana, all work as a team together and because of the way we work as a team, from even jumping on a bus and the bus driver smiling at that child in the morning, right, to when they're getting their lunch, to when they're meeting with their teacher, or even making shirts, right, which is a fun thing. It's always fun and exciting for the student and they always feel like they're part of the team and therefore they want to work hard and they, we see the rewards obviously in this, but also we're seeing it in grades and where else would a parent ever want to bring their child but to Columbiana, because the reward is truly that we prepare them better than anybody else for college and to move on in life and hopefully stay within our community. But if they don't, that's okay because at least we taught them well. That's the difference in Columbiana, a huge difference in what we do and because of that, we're exactly where we're at year after year, doing what we do every single year and the greatest thing is, is we've made some changes in the past few years in teachers. Listen, some of those great teachers that kept us up there have retired and they continue to retire, but the greatest thing is, is we have administrators that are in place that make great selections of teachers and educators and administrators to do the job that it takes in order to educate those children and continue to educate them and give them that great experience that only Columbiana High School, junior high school, and elementary school can give a child and that's what it's about.
Item twenty-three?
No report.
Item twenty-four? No report. Item twenty-five, Columbiana County Career Center Board member report?
Short report, the Career Center Board met on the twenty-sixth, they had a, basically one of the staff members, Kerry Hudson, Adult Education Assistant Director, shared information on marketing of programs in adult education, how they market, I think there was something in the newspaper about them, they use print media, verbal, they use radio, they use Facebook, job fair, they use quite a bit of ways to market their programs, they talked about those programs and that's basically the report I have for the Career Center.
Thank you. Day of next board meeting, Tuesday, April twelfth, six p.m. here in the High School Media Center. Item twenty-seven, like to make a motion considering executive session in accordance with O R C one-two-one dot two-two, for the sole purpose consideration of any of the following matters, investigation of charges and complaints, prepare for conducting and reviewing negotiations or bargaining session with public employees concerning their compensation and return conditions of their employment and management party kept confidential by federal law, the rules or state stats.
I'll second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Roncom?
Yes.
We're in a secondary session.